To order and ask Ms. Lavasi to take the role, please.
Mr. James Drang.
Here.
Mrs. Rebecca Bowlin.
Here.
Ms. Elizabeth Cullen.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Flowers.
Present.
Mr. Robert Leary.
Yeah.
Dr. Robert Power.
Here.
Ms. Stephanie Winslow.
Here.
Thank you very much. Now we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Bowlin.
All right. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have a moment of silence. Mrs. Bowlin.
Yes, I think, uh, Mrs. Winslow is going to read.
Oh, gosh, sorry, Mrs. Winslow.
No worries. No worries. Uh, please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Donald Levine, uncle of Thompson Middle School teacher Julie Downey. Colleen Nielsen, mother of Thompson Middle School teacher Todd McMaster. Joyce Sanderson, grandmother of Rogers High School parent educator Isabella Sanderson. Heather Brown, mother of Pell parent, Pell parent educator Tori Rose. Paul McGloin, uncle of Thompson Middle School teacher Erin McGloin. Brad Waterson, cousin of Student Services clerk Christine Downs. Josh Buchi, cousin of Thompson Middle School Guidance clerk Megan Colley. And Richard, um, Pyrez, uncle of Pell custodian Timothy Polly. A moment of silence, please.
Thank you. Next up is our 1.5, our mission statement, which is going to be read by Ms. Winslow.
The mission of the Newport Public School System in partnership with students, families, and the community is to provide challenging education with appropriate supports so that all students will possess the knowledge, skills, and character essential to productive citizenship, lifelong learning, and the ability to adapt successfully in a rapidly changing world.
Thank you. Next up is our portrait of a graduate from Mrs. Bowlin.
Yes, this was, you know, recently adopted with our new strategic plan. It's important that we remember this from, you know, our youngest students all the way to graduates and all teachers. So the basis for all of this and the important things are we make sure that we're ready for career and college readiness. Ownership and persistence for all students. That they experience real-world responsibility and that we encourage emerging leadership in all of our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowlin. Next up is our student council update. So we have someone here from the student council that's going to let us know what's going on at Rogers.
Uh, hello. My name is Sima Okului and I'm a senior at Rogers High School and on the student council committee. I am planning on going to college after I graduate this year and right now and participating in basketball, which is five and four, and we are taking on Middletown Rivals tomorrow, looking for the win. Some other information about sports around the school is boys' track is seven and two with a meet on Monday. And girls' track is three and four. And girls' basketball plays tonight against Narragansett, also three and four, looking to improve their record. Girls' track recently had Laura Hoag break the school record for a thousand meters. Congratulations to her. Some recent events around Rogers is school lunch became free for all students and fast for night was held for college-bound seniors. All students are currently preparing for midterms, which begin at the end of next week. And there's also some events coming up for the arts, like the art contest at the Newport Art Museum on Gerontide 9th and the band concert held at RHS on the 30th. Some clubs around school right now that are in full effect are Chess Club and Smiles, hold their weekly meetings. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time. Is there any questions?
Oh, well, thank you very much. You did a great job.
Nice job, Simi.
You can hang on if you want to, but you don't have to.
Your homework.
Thank you.
Next up is our presentations. Uh, 3.1 is the Thompson Middle School Junior Achievement. So Dr. Browner and his students will make a presentation to the committee.
So Ms. Amaral, you can join them over next to Dr. Jermaine. Okay, so good evening, Mr. Drang and the members of the Newport School Committee, also to our superintendent, Dr. Jermaine. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come and share a few of our experiences on a recent trip we took to Providence, Rhode Island for the 2024 Junior Achievement Inspire Student Career Fair at the Rhode Island Convention Center. With us tonight, we have Ms. Catherine Amaral, who is a representative from Junior Achievement Rhode Island. Catherine, you want to just raise your hands so everybody can see who you are? We have two of our promising eighth-grade Thompson Warriors who are here tonight. Uh, we have Will Simmons and Michael Turner. And we also have grade eight social studies teacher, Mr. Kevin Burke, who has joined us tonight. Uh, Mrs. Taramello is not able to be here tonight. She is out on a brief medical leave. She and Mr. Burke worked very well together to provide, uh, some important preparation for the kids as they prepare to, uh, travel to Providence for the Junior Achievement Inspire trip. So Mr. Burke and, and, uh, Ms. Mellow worked very hard with the kids, preparing them for this, um, this career exploration program. So I'm going to invite, um, Ms. Catherine Amaral to just offer a few words on behalf of Junior Achievement Rhode Island. Catherine and I met this past summer in my office at Thompson and we talked about, uh, a great, what a great opportunity this could be for our Thompson Warriors, and it has turned out to be just that. And Catherine and I did some planning and then I presented this to, uh, Ms. Mellow and Mr. Burke in September, and they were on board right away in preparation to get the kids ready for the trip on December 10th. So, Ms. Amaral.
So, uh, thank you Newport School Committee for having me. I see a couple of friends over here. Hello, hello. Shout out to Mrs. Bowlin, Ma Bowlin, friend of mine from when I was a kid growing up here in Newport. So I am a product of the Newport Public School System. I am the Director of Programs and Community Partnerships at Junior Achievement of Rhode Island. And I made it a point to connect with Thompson Middle School to make sure that Newport students were included in some of these great opportunities that the state provides, uh, here in Rhode Island. So I am very happy that Dr. Browner was able to, uh, get Thompson on board and to include these aspiring eighth graders to make good choices for their future. And the teachers at Thompson Middle School who jumped right on board. We have a curriculum that we ask these teachers to do, to implement before they come up. It is not just a, uh, field trip right up to the convention center. We ask them to teach the kids about their career pathways, college pathways, uh, trades. And they came up and were so eager, as you can see in the slideshow here, ready to learn, ready to ask questions, meet these people. We had over 90 different, uh, local businesses and, uh, then, uh, vendors at the convention center. And these kids were able to participate. I'm really proud of them. I'm really proud of Thompson. And I'm super excited to be back here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Amaral. So at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Burke just to offer, uh, to the committee, uh, any words that you want to share in the things that you did with our Thompson Warriors to prepare them for the December trip.
Certainly. So, um, we spent a few days going over, uh, the curriculum, which involved kind of like a career exploration. And like basically the, what kind of careers would they be interested in based on their personality? And then after that, then they got to explore different careers. What would be the, uh, salaries within those careers? What's the job outlook like? Are there jobs within the state of Rhode Island? Are they going to have to look for that career elsewhere outside of the state as well? And then once they actually got to the convention center, then they got to, uh, you know, explore the different careers that are there, the, all the kinds of options they had, numerous options. And not just careers of, but also, you know, educational opportunities as well. It felt like limitless while they were there, you know, probably hundreds of booths when, uh, when we actually got there. So it was a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. So I'd also like to share with you and with Dr. Jermaine that you all would have been especially proud of our Thompson Warriors. They exhibited excellent behavior. And, uh, they were on point the whole time. Uh, it was a little chaotic at times because I, I believe that on December 10th, every middle schooler from the state of Rhode Island was at the Rhode Island Convention Center. And so it was quite a number of kids. So we, we had, uh, a heavy time trying to keep track of our Thompson Warriors, but they were on point. Uh, before I ask Michael and Will to share some of their experiences with you, I will add that we had two other Thompson Warriors, uh, who also attended the trip on December 10th. Bella Petnato and, uh, Leve Lopez. Bella couldn't be here tonight. I think she, uh, she was supposed to be here. Uh, Michael and, and, and Will and Bella and I were in my office earlier today preparing what we might say tonight. And, uh, Bella was there. So I'm not certain why Bella is not able to be with us tonight. But I do solicit your thoughts and prayers for our Thompson Warrior Leve Lopez, who lost a family member, uh, this week. And, and I contacted her, um, her grandmother to offer condolences on behalf of all of us at Thompson. And so I solicit your prayers for, uh, eighth grader Leve Lopez, who's lost, lost a loved one and could not be here tonight. But Will and Michael and I were talking, and incidentally, Will and Michael are both, uh, on our Thompson Boys Basketball Team. And they had quite a game last night against Garda Middle School, and we won. And Michael and Will played quite well. So please clap for Michael and Will. Okay. I'd also like to very quickly thank Mrs. Melissa Turner, who is Michael's mom. She's a fifth grade teacher at Thompson. She's here tonight, as well as, uh, both of Will's parents who are also here tonight. So, Michael and Will, as we talked about earlier today in my office, if you would just offer the members of the Newport, uh, School Committee and Dr. Jermaine, just anything you'd like to say about your experience, uh, at the, um, JA Inspire, uh, Career Fair and anything that you'd like to offer that you got from that day and what you are now thinking about or have been encouraged to think about with regard to your future career plans.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for having me. Um, I had a good time, very good time at JA Inspire. I learned a lot of things. Um, I really learned about what a career in the future could be like for me. And, um, I want to thank Mr. Burke for bringing us there. And, um, I really liked how they showed me a lot of the opportunities and how much of a work ethic you need for all jobs. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, thanks, Will. Okay, Michael.
I first like to say thank you for, um, bringing me there. Thanks to Mr. Burke. I liked speaking to the people in the booth and like, like learning what they needed. And, uh, so liked, um, speaking to them.
Okay. Michael, did you mention to me earlier that you, uh, stopped by the, I think, the firefighters booth? And you even considered possibly entering that realm? Did you say that to me earlier?
Yeah, you guys should try on the, um, suit. And you also got a hat for tying on the suit. I thought that was pretty cool.
Okay.
You also got to fly around like a drone and got rubber duck. So, so cool.
All good things. Okay, so this trip just, I'm hopeful, inspired our Thompson Warriors to really think about the fact that first and foremost, the sky is the limit. Anything worth having is worth the trouble you got to go through to get. So you must first finish your education and then think about what the future could hold. Uh, I will say that, uh, Michael and Will are well on their way. They are two of our top eighth graders and, uh, strong workers. They have a good work ethic. Okay, Will talked about work ethic today in my office. I was quite impressed with that because I didn't see that coming. But I was very proud of him for bringing that up. And I told him I wanted him to say that tonight, and he remembered to do so. So again, to the members of the school committee, thank you all for inviting us tonight, Dr. Jermaine. And also thank you, uh, Ms. Amaral and Mr. Burke for being here tonight. Thank you. Question?
Thank you, Dr. Browner. Yep, I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions or comments on the school committee. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, just bringing back what we've already talked about tonight. This is good examples of career and college readiness and absolutely emerging leadership. Because that's what both of you are, emerging leaders in your school.
Thank you.
We hope to see you in the future here often.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions, Ms. Winslow. Mr. Chair, um, what is something that, like, that really surprised you about the experience?
How much they really explained how the jobs worked and how you can work in a company like that. It was, they just taught you a lot about working in a company and how, um, behavior you need in a company.
How many booths there were? There was a lot of booths.
There were numerous vendors for the kids to, to see and experience.
And just.
Anyone else?
Yes, one more, please. Um, and how do you think maybe having this experience might impact what you do next year at Rogers?
I think it taught me a lot and I, it helps me to think forward in jobs. For like, especially like the NACTAC program at Rogers. And, um, it taught me how I can use like my strengths to my abilities in working.
Nothing really to add.
Mrs. Cullen?
Just quickly, um, if, if there was a fire, um, or first responders or EMT type program at NACTAC, would that be something you'd be interested in doing?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, last question, promise. What were some of the questions that you had for the career, the reps of the vendors and companies that were there?
I, one of the more questions I asked was, um, what type of degrees in college you would need for a type of job like they had? And they explained well what I would need for types of jobs like they had.
Good question.
I asked, um, certain skills that you need to have to like work at that job. Stuff you need to know, certain education.
Well done, guys.
Anyone else?
I would just add that the principal can't always go on a field trip, but I went on this field trip and I stayed the whole time. And I'm very happy that I did. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
Thank you and your parents. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Next up is our 3.2, 3.2, Throughline Learning, which Sean Rubin of Throughline Learning will present along with Dr. Young and Principal Vance, a plan for next steps in supporting the new Rogers High School and its staff.
Yeah, that's fine. Just, just stay right there. So the work, so the work we're doing with Sean and Throughline Learning is to help us support our, our teaching staff transition from the old building into the new building. Uh, knowing the, the level of technology that's going to be in the new space, um, which will be vastly different from the existing building. Um, we're looking to, uh, provide opportunities for professional learning around how to use the technology, how to use, um, the time and the schedule, space in the building. How to kind of build out like professional learning communities, staff meetings and, and such to be able to create a learning environment that is really kind of cutting edge with the technology and the strategies and making sure that our staff are fully prepared walking in the door. Um, because the last thing that we want to see is to have these, this new equipment, these new technologies, these new, um, devices not being used to their fullest capacity from day one. So the work that we're doing aligns with our strategic plan specifically around, I can't read that right now. So we're, we're trying to, we're working with creating a, a shared vision of rigorous instruction and implementing, um, implementing the new technology and strategies in that space. Um, so the, everything that we do, we always go back to that strategic plan as our, kind of our guiding structure.
Uh, first of all, thank you for, uh, having us here to present. We are following up today, just a reminder on the report that we created last year, um, bringing the community together around the design of how we want to leverage the new, uh, Rogers High School. I think one of the things that's super important is the timing. And last year, we presented side by side with Attuned, who had done the strategic plan, was, was perfect in the sense that oftentimes when you're building a professional learning plan, you either have an out-of-date strategic plan or no strategic plan in place at all. But one that was so well thought together and, and had so many stakeholders involved in it has really been a great jumping off point for the design of what we've been doing together. Following up on the, on the report that we created last year. So the areas that I'm going to speak to are some of the, the structural pieces that we're putting in place, um, to support the professional learning. But I also want to mention that, you know, even just today, um, Attuned was at Rogers High School doing classroom visits and observations and walkthroughs. So what we're sharing up here is really around how are we leveraging the building and supporting teachers in the sense of the transition? There are also a lot of other components and pieces that this team has put together that are outside of the work that Throughline is doing, that are supporting teachers around better practice, integrating curriculum, and looking at data to make decisions. So these pieces are supporting our work, but also a lot of other work as well. So from our standpoint, Throughline Learning is really about establishing some structures, some processes with the team, but making sure that everything can be a gradual release back to the building and the school to be able to run these systems and processes with their teachers in an ongoing way, uh, well beyond the time that we're together. Simultaneously, we have to be thinking about the constructs and things that already exist within the Rogers structure. Um, you know, whether limited PD days, the, the need for, um, you know, high-quality instructional material, professional learning, um, the, you know, there, there's just a range of different factors. And so we're trying to figure out how do we work within that structure? And so Jared had a really, um, you know, strong idea of finding some of the, the really talented individuals that have been leveraging technology. Uh, Robert was able to, to get some early smart boards into a few of those teachers' classrooms last year prior to moving into the building and then continue them this year. And so what's emerged are four really, um, high-quality educators in their own classrooms who are also really excited about becoming coaches to other teachers in terms of mentorship. So our organization now is meeting on a regular basis with those four teachers, training them in critical skills around coaching and mentorship. So that when they do create the, when we do create the structures that will be supporting the, the transition and day-to-day life within the new building, these folks will already have been trained. They'll already have had some opportunities, some bites of the apple, working with different early adopter teachers across the building. And, and, and that, you know, and a foundational, um, structure for teachers, coaching teachers will be established. So that's one, one area of support that we're working through. The second is, um, you know, Rogers has a, um, bi-monthly, uh, faculty meeting that happens on Thursdays. Um, we are going to be leveraging one, at least one of those Thursdays a month to be doing, um, a type of professional learning that's called an unconference. Now, again, because of the situation, you know, some of the professional learning that's already been supported with Spring Point and Attuned, these are grant-funded pieces. The work we're doing is also grant-funded. Rogers doesn't necessarily have a lot of its own professional learning budget to be spending on external professional learning providers. Um, and so, and research shows that oftentimes teachers training other teachers is really one of the greatest ways for actually moving best information around a building. So when you combine that with the coaching, which we do have the ability to bring outside ideas into, um, into Rogers High School and support them that way, this allows for information to move within the building. So an unconference is basically will, will show up at the day of the faculty meeting on that Thursday. And folks will essentially say, you know, I'm, I want to put up a session that's going to talk about how to do formative assessment using my smart board. And then anybody that's interested on the faculty and seeing that session will be able to go to that session as they're getting that information. If it turns out that it's not necessarily the most compelling information for them, they can vote with their feet and go and attend another session. But people are posting sessions at the outset and we can do a lot of work ahead of time. You know, Jared just did a whole bunch of classroom walkthroughs and observations to say to a teacher, you know, what I saw you do today in that classroom was really impressive. I think other teachers would benefit from seeing it. And then the unconference gives an opportunity and a space for that to happen. Uh, finally, um, this crew of teacher coaches that we're training and these individuals that are kind of leading these unconference sessions, we want to be gathering and collecting a lot of this as, uh, assets. Video, um, asynchronous resources, um, and actually create a library of these resources that teachers will have access to independently and individually. Whether there have to do with like finding the right apps in the, uh, the app store that has, that is connected to the smart, uh, smart board, uh, whether it has to do with how do you, um, run a particular polling system within your, within your classroom? How a particular AI or, or tool or app could be used, um, with students? Whatever happens to be, when we can capture those things as well and they can live in this library of asynchronous resources, that'll also provide a lot of support for teachers to kind of get that just-in-time, uh, need fulfilled. And so those are kind of the three foundational structures we're building right now. But on top of that, there also is work being done right now to figure out exactly what the summer professional learning will look like. And that would be a more traditional professional learning where folks will come in for, I think you, we, you talked about four hours or so is the ideal. But it's all still being kind of designed and put together. And there will be very targeted sessions that will really help support those teachers being able to move into their brand-new space, understand all of the bells and whistles that, that exist in their classroom, have some time in those classrooms to really practice and, and tinker and play and get comfortable before the students actually arrive, uh, in September. Do we want to keep going or do we want to pause? Keep going? All right. So I think the only, uh, and then Rob was going to talk a little bit about some of the more targeted professional learning, uh, that has to do with the technology itself.
You nailed it though. You stole kind of my thunder there. But, uh, yeah, sure. I just to kind of piggyback what Sean was talking about. But, uh, you know, for my role is, is to really work with the teachers and maximize their teaching skills when we, we are using the technology in that. So we have set up some time, so monthly on that third, uh, Thursday, where the vendor is going to come down and work with teachers on how to use the smart boards. But another thing that we're doing, the CTE side of the house is we're also going to train our students. So our AOIT students are going to be trained up on these and they'll be like the resident experts, the kind of the common knowledge. So almost like a, a help desk, if you will, where if something comes down, we can send, you know, one or two of these students to the classroom and help the teacher, uh, fine-tune something. It could be anything simple as, you know, I can't get the volume to come out. I can't get this to connect. And our, our help desk students will go down there and support that as well. So, um, and we're also looking at, um, you know, the sooner we can get a classroom complete in the new building, we're looking at having some opportunities in those last probably 10 days of school or so to have teachers actually go up into those classrooms, sit in the classroom and really kind of even do like a mock lesson, uh, in front of their peers or something like that. So we're really working with the, with the Gilbane and Downs team to have, but most likely on the third floor, a couple of classrooms where everything is complete. Before they leave in June, they'll be able to go up there and start to work and, and test some things out.
And I think, uh, if we want to move to the, the last slide, but one, I think one, no, not that one, the one before that. So I think just one of the last things I want to mention, um, you know, separate from technology and professional learning, when we looked across the strategic plan and the way the strategic plan was presented with some of the more systemic challenges that Rogers is, is facing, what we realized is that there's also, and this was very heavily called out in the report as well, there are a lot of folks outside of the, of the school itself that have a lot of value and can add a lot of capacity. Uh, community-based organizations, parents and families, community members. But it's been very challenging to figure out exactly how to build those, um, partnerships and relationships so that, so that the real opportunity for that collaboration can happen. The new building with its The new building with its common areas and lots of different technology that exists in some of those common spaces, will really provide a lot of opportunities for those engagements to be happening, whether they're during the school day or after school. And so what we've been doing also simultaneously, Jared, Assistant Principal Mike Monahan, and myself have been meeting with different community based organization leaders and working through kind of like, what would be the right rules of engagement? What are the, what's the application process to work with the Rogers students within the Rogers building? What are some of the things that they could offer, that they would be excited to offer based off their expertise and, and competencies? And, and what we're seeing is the, a real opportunity for when we were able to have those conversations, you can really bring up some of the, the things that have gone wrong in the past and be really proactive at designing the right application process for being able to bring those two groups together on behalf of students and families. And so that work is also happening simultaneously, and we'll be ready to roll as the time of the transition to the new building. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Anyone? Mrs. Cole?
Just a quick question. Individualized learning plans, is that something that you're building into this new technology for the teachers to be using daily and the students?
So we have Zello, which is, is being used in during-
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Sorry. So we, we use Zello at this point, which is, which is our ILP program. Students and staff work on that and crew. And so we have lessons that get rolled out through the guidance department into those, into the crew for kids to work on. Potentially, there will be an uptick in the usage of some of those lessons and activities, so kids get a little bit more information around career options or college options. But yes, it is something that we will be working with.
It just seems that since we're starting a fresh piece of paper with new technology and new practices, that that might be a conversation that can be top of mind.
Definitely, definitely.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, more of a comment. I've said this a couple of times, but I'm just always enjoy these presentations to hear how you're trying to transform that use of technology at Rogers, and I just hope that what we learn here can be applied to Thompson Middle School and Pell Elementary. You know, what's that technology integration look like across the district? So don't go anywhere. Thank you.
Anyone else? Have any comments, questions? Mrs. Bowlen?
Question. Next year, we're sticking, are we sticking with the Chromebooks for all students? And, and new ones, pretty much, right?
Yeah, the freshman class will, will get a, a brand new one, and they'll keep that for the four years. Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Oh, Sandra, I'm sorry. Mrs. Flowers, Dr. Flowers.
Looking at the slide about the key challenges that have been identified, and the gap, if you will, between or among various parts of our population, I think there's a phrase that we used to use years ago and probably still do, self fulfilling prophecies. And, you know, there were folks who might say, oh, you know, so and so, we don't, you know, should we challenge a particular youngster? But I think sometimes it even happens among the young people themselves. And when you were, I was just jotting a few things down here, that looking at outside resources, partnerships, people in the community, and if possible, unless they're using, but bringing in folks who fall into those categories, who have succeeded, who have found their niche career wise, socially and so forth, and sometimes not even having to speak loudly about it, but being the good role models, that it's as important as your rigorous curriculum and everything else, that should be part of it. I mean, I know that's what you're, you're thinking, you know, and this is something that I think everyone who has the, the least connection with the young people has to say that, and we say this all, all during the election season, you know, our diversity is our strength, and whatever your zip code is or wherever your address is, does not take away or guarantee success. And we've all said it, and we have to mean it. And I say that's all of us, everyone here in, in the whole community and beyond. And I'm just glad to see that that information is there and that it's incumbent upon all of us to really do something about that.
Thank you, Dr. Flowers. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up on our agenda is 4.1, public comment. Mrs. Lever, sir, is there anyone who signed up?
Yes, there is. I'm a part of our agenda, 5.2, program of studies.
Okay. So we cannot have that person wait until 5.2 then?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah. So, so next up is, is 5.1, subcommittee appointments. Ms. Bowlen?
Yes, I'd like to move that we appoint all of the following people to the working group appointments and reappointments that have been recommended by the chair.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one comment. I think we, I've said it before, this won't come as a surprise, but we don't have a school committee that represents the diversity of our students and families. We're signing ourselves up for some subcommittees that also don't represent the diversity of our students and families. We just had some evidence of the disparate outcomes that continue to persist in our school department, and representation matters. So I for one will continue to seek at least help on the policy subcommittee and health and wellness subcommittees, where I'll be participating from some new voices. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question about the, the community members that are listed here. Have they all agreed?
Yes. The way it worked, I, I was, got emails from people in the community who wanted to be on committees, so whoever wanted to be on it, I pretty much put them on it, and I couldn't see any reason not to. A lot of them were people who ran for office, and I think everybody here is familiar with, you know, they'd run for school committee. As far as the members of the school committee, I believe everybody has been put on whatever committee that they asked to be put on. So I was pretty, I tried to accommodate everybody as much as I could. And again, I think, um, everybody on here, at least for the policy committee and the new people, they all sent me emails requesting to be on a specific policy.
And you've, now that we, we will vote on it, you'll confirm with them, tell them when the meeting dates and all of that.
Actually, the meeting dates would all come from Mrs. Nash, and the, and the communications would come from the chair.
And if additional people want to join, what's the process for that?
They would just have to let us know. I mean, they'd have to basically send an email, which policy they want, they want to be on, you know, it'd be helpful if they said what their qualifications were to be on that committee. I mean, we already have nine people, I think, on policy, and that's usually the committee that most people want to be on. I wouldn't put really anybody else on that. I mean, it's probably a lot as it is.
I was talking generally. I don't have anybody mind particularly.
Well, there's always people that don't show up, so if we have eight or nine people on a committee and a couple, the odds are a couple aren't going to show up, then you'll have seven people, so.
In, in the future, we're going to talk about a couple additional subcommittees that are still pending in, in the discussion phase, but.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Ms. Karen?
Ms. Leary?
Mrs. Bowlen, could you set the meeting right away for the finance group?
I guess, I think we're trying to do it next Tuesday.
Correct.
At 2:00. But I'm sure Mrs. Lavasi will get back to everybody on that.
To, um-
Does that work for you, 2:00?
Yeah, it works for me. Do you want me to make some suggestions? No, wait till we do budget, we get the budget.
Well, no, I think we should wait till we have the first meeting and-
Well, I want to give them some ideas for the first meeting, and go in there, some cuts, things to look at, you know?
It's up to you. You guys are on the committee.
I guess I can do it during budget time, because it'd be-
Yeah, budget time should probably-
Sure, all right. No problem.
I know, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sure would be there, so I'll probably work that out with him as far as the time. And also, you know, Penny's going to be on that committee, I'm sure she probably works, I don't know what she does, but you'd have to check with her too. Anyone else? Okay. Well, you have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next up is 5.2.
This is a motion to approve the Rogers High School program of studies for school year 2025-2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Powers, seconds.
I want you to take the picture.
All right, so on our website, the Rogers High School website, if you go to departments that, in the guidance department tab, you can find our current 24-25 program studies, where we've done a few updates that I've highlighted here. Really nothing major, but I did put page numbers to where these proposed changes would be. English, we, we've had a new curriculum, and we've, we've updated all the course descriptions to, to highlight what, what the new curriculum covers. We had some outdated stuff in there in the past, and we've caught up now, and, and our current course descriptions match what the curriculum that we're implementing is doing. In fine arts, we have a new department chair, Ms. Wunderler. She has proposed a couple of updates on the course descriptions to better reflect on the evolving coursework that, that they're doing there. I included with that, we had a course called Art I, and she wanted the name to be changed to Art Appreciation. Our, we have a new band teacher, who was temporary, and now he has been appointed full time. And we had a modern band course that he is proposing to change to guitar, which was a course that we had in the past. We have all the guitars, there's no cost issue or anything like that. In fact, Mr. Stanley has done a great job of raising funds and getting the equipment and all of that, so we'd like to propose that we go back to guitar. In world language, a few years ago, we implemented Portuguese, a third language, to accompany French and Spanish. This will be year three next year, and we do have a full section of Portuguese II students, who, many of whom are interested in taking Portuguese III, so we're proposing that we add a third section. The, the big, the big changes that went in last year had to do with what Rhode Island Department of Education has done for updating all, all high school requirements, starting with the class of 2028. Those students are ninth graders now, and they've made two, two years of world language requirement in specific courses within the four years of math, Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, and an advanced math course, along with personal finance. So that's, that's all in there, that was added last year. But other than that, no new course requirements beyond those. And that's what we're proposing.
Thank you. Before I open it up to everybody on the committee, I know someone here wants to speak, and if you want to come up now?
I'm a teacher at Rogers, and I live in Newport. I have a recommendation, one coming as history department head and another as a teacher, discussing with colleagues at the high school. I think it's on page five of the proposal. It lists the graduation requirements by subject, I think. I think it was page five.
Yeah.
Okay. That's three, four, one more. So here you see it, two things on this page I think would be a good discussion to have at some point, if not tonight. The one that's closest to me is the history department, social studies, and you can see it says minimum course requirements. And for social studies, it says three years, of which one year is US History II. And that has been something we've had for a long time. It's a national requirement, actually, also, to have US history. But in the past 12 years, we split US history into two sections, US History I and US History II. And US History I is where we house the civics requirement. That's part of Rhode Island's new regulations as well. So my suggestion was to add, for that section, social studies, three years required minimum by the state, one of which, one year is US History II, and I suggest having another year would be US History I civics. I think it's important to have it as a requirement. I think it sets a high standard. I think our students can absolutely achieve it. I think the teachers can assist students to have that actually happen. It's an important content. Personally, I wouldn't mind seeing the world history class that ninth graders take also be a requirement, but I know that may be a little bit too tight of a requirement for all, but I think that having US History I and US History II be two out of the three years a requirement is a valid suggestion. So that was my first addition. The second one has to do with the number of credits, which is a little bit above this, it's on the same page, but it's a little higher. Some years ago, Rhode Island RIDE set the minimum bar for the number of credits at a high school at 20, and Rogers has the minimum requirement at 20. Some of our towns in, Middletown has 24 credits. Portsmouth, I believe, has 22 or 23, depending on if you do some type of internship. We're the, we have the lowest number. I think we can do better. In the years past, we actually proud, we were, we were proud to be one of the, the highest credit requirements in the state. I think that students are capable, and I think we have a schedule that can make it happen, that you could achieve more than 20 credits in four years of study. So I, that, that comes from some of my colleagues.
I apologize for not telling you at the beginning, but we, you're held to-
Oh, yeah. That's right. Well, those are my two suggestions.
Can I ask her a couple of questions?
Oh, go ahead.
This isn't, I mean, it's not public comment, so it's an exchange of information. I wholeheartedly agree with you about US History I and US History II, and I'll, I'll tell you why. We live in one of the most historic cities in Rhode Island in the country and the world, and US History I, I'm guessing, would be, when does, when, when does it start? What year does it start?
Well, we usually start, we follow kind of a, an AP US History guidance, which now is 1491.
Okay.
To make sure that we're covering-
We've got the Barazano Bridge, so we can talk about that.
Yeah. So we studied that, and, and we've actually following, we're already following the RIDE guidelines for social studies requirements. So we're, we're going from 1491, and we're, we're going through the Civil War into, sorry, we're going up to the Civil War in US I. But we have a very substantial civics curriculum that we took from RIDE and put it into US I. So students have to pass certain benchmark assignments, including a constitution test. And this is offered to all students of all levels, and we have had great success. We've been doing that for about 10 years now. But now we've kind of following the RIDE guidelines, have kind of streamlined everything to make sure it's where it should be. So I think that's a very important thing to have, and that's why I would like to see it be required.
Yeah, I, I really do agree with you, especially if US History I slash civics is talking about the Constitution, we, so many people that are not paying attention to that. So I think that it should be a requirement, US History I. And just a quick story, Mike and I were hosts to a German exchange student who was a junior at Rogers many years ago, and when we did his schedule, they said, okay, you're a junior, you're US History II. But I said, we're here in- But I said, we're here in Newport, he's learning about the history of where he is staying, pride of place. We need to have US History I definitely. So how do we make that happen?
We, we also, per state law, have in US I Rhode Island History, a smaller, we, we have a, we have an elective class in Rhode Island History that runs here and there, based on student interest.
You said that it's not a popular class?
Oh, it's, it's popular. It's just that, I think it's, it can compete with other, if students have, over the span of four years, they can take it and then it doesn't have to run every year.
There's an elective that is the history of sports, which I bet you they would prefer over the history of Rhode Island.
Well, that class is actually, interestingly, that class is an attention grabber, but we, using a sports metaphor, we call it like a head fake class because they think it's all about sports, but it's a lot about social history.
Good.
In the United States. So they go in and then we teach social history through the study of, of sport, which draws a lot of kids into the subject. That class was actually modeled after a class my, my father had created over at Salve, that they still run over there. So we kind of threw that in and it's, it's been a very popular class for about 15 years now.
Thank you.
Mrs. Turner, actually, I owe you an apology because if, I forgot that if you are commenting on something on our agenda, there is no time limit. So if you, if I cut you off and you wanted to add something, you feel free.
I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
I would like to ask Mr. Vance, I mean, can you address her question about the History I? Is that something that is possible or something you looked at?
It's definitely something that is possible, but I don't have the authority to make it a graduation requirement. You guys have the authority to make it a graduation requirement.
Let's put it on the next agenda.
Right. And that's why we were waiting kind of for this conversation and to have this presented in, in a sense.
Mrs. Bolan?
How else would they get civics then, if they, which is a requirement, if they didn't take US I?
Just to, to be clear, and I'm not against this.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of requirements imposed upon us for this upcoming class that's now in grade nine, that we're trying to, to manage. We have all our students take their sophomore year, US History I. We don't really give them another option. What could happen is a student may not pass US History I and they may become a stronger student down the road. And we have a number of electives that might be more relevant in their senior year and they could take three credits, you know, or pass three credits and one of them may not be US I. In many cases, US I would be the, one of the three credits that they do pass.
I guess we're talking about requirements and having it codified, having it in writing. So, what do you think about that?
What do I think about that? I, I, I think a lot of our students become stronger students as they go on in their high school career. And if we make those two requirements, they might have something else. We have AP courses, we have other courses, we have a lot of electives in the Social Studies/History Program. And if they have to go back and retake a course.
So, as.
When they have other options, they are gonna have to go back and take that other course. That could be good.
So you're saying, okay. So Mrs. Bolan asked about civics, and that's connected to US History I. So if it's not a requirement, how do they fulfill that? Isn't that now a state requirement? Or, I may be incorrect?
It is.
So, on a, kids that go through Rogers, they start taking World History, then they take US I, they take US II. That is the scope and sequence of our History and Social Studies courses. After those two, they have a variety of issues from, but it's not labeled a requirement. But when we schedule kids, we go, World History, US I, US II.
No, I understand that, but I think we need to put it in writing in, in, yeah. I'd love to have a motion to do that, if we can. We can't do it here, but in February.
Yeah, we could do it at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Clear.
Mr. Monahan, you mentioned you hired a music teacher?
No.
No, okay. I was good, because, because I thought, just started talking, you mentioned that.
We had a, a leave of absence that this person covered for, and then a leave of absence to return where this person became appointed. So there, there's no new teacher.
Have you looked into, Thompson has music classes and art classes. They're not even teaching full schedules, but they're being paid full-time. On the report I've gotten from the superintendent on class schedules, have you looked into, maybe too late now, I've looked into doing that, sending? Wait, I mean, you can't do it.
So Mr. Stanley teaches a full course load at the high school. So we, we would, we'd be in violation of TAN contract if he taught a full course load at the high school and then went down to Thompson and picked up a course or a couple of sections.
I'm talking about Thompson coming to Rogers. They have, it's, it's, it's music classes that no kids are, no, they don't have a full schedule. They're paid full-time. There's also art classes, same way. There's, I think, a gym class, same way. So there's a lot of classes down here and electives that are not, they're not doing a full day, where a normal teacher is teaching the five math classes or whatever they're doing. So, we're gonna have to take a serious look at that when budget comes up.
It's not something that we're well-versed in, what the staffing levels and needs are at Thompson. Like, we can speak to what our folks are doing at the high school. So like, Richard has a full schedule and is growing that music program leaps and bounds every year. And he's doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job. So it'd be hard-pressed to see if there would be room for somebody else to move in up here. I think the lens really needs to be back at Thompson with how they are scheduling.
Mrs. Bolan?
Well, I can finish.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you. So, one of the things on the Finance Committee we're gonna look at coming up Tuesday, hopefully go through that, is that we're gonna look at a 5% cut in each school, in the budget, and what's that look like, you know, besides doing that. So we're gonna have a 5% cut, maybe a 10% cut. So you're gonna have to take a serious look at that. So you may have to go back and go through this again, you know.
Mrs. Bolan?
So, I wanted to address, kind of Bobby's addressing right now, is, we, we're gonna have a huge, huge challenge this year to, and it, over, like, close to 3 million to figure out. I mean, let's just call it what it is. And therefore, like, in my mind right now, I, I know I read this on Facebook today, a parent, you know, just saying, oh, my kid's picking his college classes, or his senior class, classes right now. And she was just lamenting on how fast it went. But, so in my mind, I'm like, wait a minute. If he's picking his classes, we don't even know what classes, we're gonna have the money to offer next year. So I, I kind of feel like, so if, yeah, I don't know where we are in this process, but if that was true or not, but this parent did comment on it. I kind of think this is the cart before the horse, and that we really need to, to make sure that we can offer all these classes, because there's, there's a good chance that we're not gonna have, there's gonna be some, you know, classes that we can't offer, whether it's the middle, the high school. So, I, I almost would, I'd like to see this put off at least until our, you know, group meets, the Finance Committee, and, and get input from everyone. Because if, I don't want kids signing up for classes that we're not gonna offer, not knowing right now. That's all.
Thank you, well said.
Go ahead, Michael.
So, I have to come back.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I, I fully understand and appreciate that. What we need to do in order to build the high school schedule is get the students thinking about what they want to take. And no matter what, each year, they select, like, like Mrs. Turner just talked about, Rhode Island History, sometimes it runs and sometimes it doesn't. I mean, it's, it's a class we can do. And if enough students choose it, we could run it. But it also depends on how many teachers we have in a given department who are certified to teach that. And we make those decisions every year. We get a tally of all the courses. And it takes a while to get, you know, 650 students to turn in their course selection sheets and then to get them all on the computer, all tallied up, and to look at how many requests for each course there are. And then we look, and if there's only a few requests, or we only have so many teachers, what do we need to run? And that's where the requirements come in. The more requirements, we have to run those first. And then the electives as we can and as they're demanded, you know, and as the budget allows, is what we do.
So, so you're saying, as I said, the cart before the horse, you're saying that it's really the other way around, that you want to see what kids are interested in. But we also have to make sure that everybody understands that there could be some, you know, large cuts that take place.
Dr. Powell?
Yeah. Build the dream, and then we'll deal with the money. You guys do what you do. Put the dreams together, let the kids sign up, they're gonna sign up for, and then we'll have to deal with the money. And if we don't have the money, then we'll have to rearrange things. But I think that, you know, you put together what you think's your best, and then we'll try to do the best we can do. If we don't have it, we don't have it, that's the way it's gonna be. But I don't think you should be pulling the reins in now. It's not the time. Do what you gotta do, and then we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Well, you have, did you want?
On the whole, um, okay. I did have a couple of questions, and it might be something that Mr. Young could answer. How many kids are taking AP Computer Science?
We can get that for her.
I can get that for you. I, I wasn't prepared. I don't have the number.
Okay. And how are the signups coming for AOIT, PTEC, and NACTEC for next year?
They're pretty consistent from outside of Newport. The numbers at Thompson are a little low, so we're kind of re-engaging the conversation, reaching out to parents and making sure they're aware of the opportunities.
Yeah, I think it needs to have a marketing push, because I.
Yeah. Ms. Clark and I talked about that on Monday.
The numbers are declining statewide. I mean, it's not just us. We've lost the vibe on Computer Science.
Every school has, there's 335 programs now in the state of Rhode Island.
I know.
So.
I know. It's watered down.
It's watered down, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. We gotta pull it, pull it up again, because it, I was talking to somebody at Ride in the College and Career Office the other day, and I was telling him, he was new to the position, and I was telling him about how, how amazing pre-COVID CS4RI and all of the, you know, Cyber Patriot and all of the Computer Science things that Governor Raimondo had really championed. They've really fizzled. We gotta get it back.
Yeah, and they fizzle, I mean, because every, every single high school has one, and so.
I don't mean just for our, statewide, the numbers are down.
But how qualified are all those teachers to be teaching that highly competitive program?
Exactly. Thanks.
Well, we have a motion.
Mr. Young, how many kids we have in the Bochek Program, bottom district now? Roughly, roughly?
120.
All full-time?
No, we're phasing out full-time now. We have, we still have grades 10, 11, and 12 of, of part-time. But those numbers are, it's probably 20, 22 part-time right now.
So you think it's gonna be less than all these kids are phasing in at full-time?
We haven't noticed a significant change in the numbers.
Because technically, there's like 500, 550 kids that came from Thompson, you know, which makes Rogers, if you look at the numbers, the total numbers. So we have another 120, whatever you said there.
Right.
From Bochek, it's up to 650, 670, you know. So is that number gonna drop?
I don't anticipate it dropping, no.
Even though everybody else is doing Bochek now?
Yeah, within the region here, we're not having as many competitive programs. So, IT is at every school, but only, we're the only auto, we're the only culinary, we're the only ROTC. Those are the programs that are carrying most of the numbers. And, you know, and in East Bay fashion, no one wants to drive over the bridge to go to another place. So, so we don't get a lot of students leaving here and going to North Kingstown or, you know, Bristol Warren or anything like that.
Are they transported, they transport themselves if they did decide to go to North Kingstown?
They would have to transport themselves.
See, that's, we're in a school choice situation here in Rhode Island now, where you have, if you don't have a program that's off in your district, you can go to another district and take that program, let's say it's basket reading, just throw something out there, it gives the hell, you know. You can do it, but the problem is in Newport, we don't have transportation.
Well, the state's divided by region, so if you go outside the region, you're, you're on your own. Within the region, we transport. But if you go outside of the region, like Jamestown is outside of our region, so if a Newporter wanted to go to Jamestown, then they would have to provide transportation.
We're about Middletown, Portsmouth.
They're within our region, so it, it, it's together.
Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Jared.
Can I just make a comment?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. I just wanted to thank our department chairs for the time and effort they put into pulling this information together. But I really want to highlight Mr. Monahan, the amount of hours and time and effort that he puts into creating the program of studies and making sure that we're meeting state requirements. And we have everything documented in that, in that documentation. There's a lot of time and effort, and he is deeply involved in so many things in the building. It's just another piece that he picks up. He does a phenomenal, phenomenal job with it. So I just wanted to thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try that again. I apologize, Mr. Vance, I didn't see that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Next up on the agenda, 5.3, Mrs. Bolan?
This, uh, this motion is a request for approval of RHS Furniture Award.
Second?
Second.
Can't hear it. I can't hear you. Yeah.
Well, sorry. I don't know, maybe I'll get closer. What? I, I moved the motion for the furniture award.
And Bob Powell, second.
Sorry, I'm getting closer now.
So Becky, do you want to?
Okay, yes. I just wanted to let everyone know that this process of deciding what furniture to get was very involved. We brought samples of all the pertinent furniture back last spring. And, and one of the biggest things came down to this chairs for the kids at school. And we actually had some controversy over it. So, Mrs. Lavassier, she ran a little challenge in her office, and we actually came down to a chair. It's saving us $58,000 and it's also a chair that's guaranteed for life. And the good thing is, is because it didn't happen very often. What?
She said, who's life?
Well, my life. Saving you $58,000. But, uh, the, the, this furniture involves, you know, all the, all, all the offices, the classrooms. And one of the best things that came out of this was we have an extra $225,000 left in that account. It cannot be transferred to another account. But remember that when we were going through the process of trying to, you know, cut down on things, there were a lot of things that kind of left to the side. And so, this will provide us with the bike racks, maybe some of the benches we wanted to put out. And due to a grant we received, we're not allowed to reduce the amount in this and transfer it to anything else. So, this will be sitting there for us to use, and it's very exciting. And I recommend that we prove it.
Any discussion?
Becky, how many, how many students are we anticipating for furniture? I mean, what's, do we have a center?
755.
And, and how many kids are we having at Rogers right now?
650. 640?
640. And, and this is how much furniture, for how many kids?
755.
So, are we, should we be thinking that maybe we've got 50 kids or, I mean, some of that? I'm, I'm gonna be with Mr. Leary, I'm gonna look at the numbers and say, are we gonna have enough kids? Are we gonna have too much furniture? Are we gonna have extra furniture we don't need because we don't have that many kids in the school? I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
But my sense is that maybe we're too high.
Just, it's, it's kind of like when we did the classrooms here at Pell. You can't just say 24 kids here, 24 kids here. The, the way the numbers fall, the, we, you know, every classroom really has to have 24 chairs in it, in order to, you know, take care of the needs, really. And you're also, this is a one-time opportunity to get it all, get it matching. And I don't know that 755, there's also, if you build it, they will come. And I think we're gonna have, well, it did happen. It did.
Where did it happen?
That's not projected in our enrollment figures.
At Pell, no, it did, it did on Pell. Not enough kids in the state.
At the beginning at Pell, and then it's gone down, but it's gone down all over the state. So.
Well, I mean, I, I understand X amount of seats in a classroom and you're gonna have X amount of kids come to the classroom. You're not gonna be moving chairs, take your chairs with you and walk around the building. I, I got that part of it. But I do wonder about how much we're putting into all those locations and are, are we going to over, have too much stuff? putting into all those locations, and are, are we going to over, have too much stuff and not enough kids? That's just, you know, I mean, I wasn't there for the whole conversation, but I'm just wondering if that's where we are with that.
So we can certainly, we have our meeting tomorrow at 7:30. We'll raise the stock to power with the group. But, um, the consultants and all our advisors, I'd say, did recommend that we move forward with this in this way. But that's a good question, and we can ask tomorrow and bring it back to you.
I mean, I, I'm not opposed to it. I just think that it's a question that should get asked because if, if all of a sudden, we have a situation where we've got a lot of stuff hanging around, and people are looking at it and say, why'd you buy that? You knew that your numbers were not what they are. Um, I mean, I just think we should need to ask the question. If it is what it is, I'm not trying to stop the process, but I'm trying to make sure we ask, you know, the right question. On the other hand, I do think that once the high school's built, that we will have an increase of kids coming to that school. And we, it happened here, Mr. Leary and I disagreed on that at that time. But we, but we basically put Clooney School out of business, and the kids came here. So it, they actually did go up a little bit. So I, I don't know what the future's going to be for Newport, and clearly the numbers have gone down, and they may continue to go down. But I just thought I'd ask the question.
Can I ask a question? So what is the exact number of students at Rogers High School today?
I'd have to, go ahead. 635.
I have the, I have the breakdown here.
And that includes all the NACTEC kids?
Correct.
Mrs. Bowlin?
I will say too, that I just thought about this, but we just sent, in order to get this approved, it has to go into RIDE. In, in our MOU, memorandum of agreement-
That is correct.
We put out that we had 755 kids, and I think that if we came back and said we only ordered enough for 600, you know, or 650, that they would have a problem with it, because they have to approve everything we do on our, uh, FFNE.
If you remember correctly, um, Mrs. Bowlin, that is why RIDE actually is looking at the furniture bid right now, and, um, is going to be coming back to us with approval or not, or any questions RIDE has. So RIDE does have this in their possession also.
So we're voting on it, but RIDE still has to approve it?
Yes. Um, just, just to follow up on, um, Dr. Powers' question about numbers, there are 50 fewer eighth graders than there are ninth graders currently.
The numbers are going down. Yeah, wait, the numbers are going down. I agree with the two Bards.
It's not going to happen.
We'll still bring it up tomorrow.
Billings comes not dream.
And get a response, you know, if they thought that we could even get away with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I cannot support this conversation that we had now. Plus, is this coming out of the, the other 2.4 million you reached to request it from the city? Is that where it's coming from?
Absolutely not. This is-
This has been prior, the other, the other 26 million that rolled by.
No, it's, it's not even really, it's, it's, uh, we had to guarantee it in a grant that we would put, we, they get, we were given money, and we had to guarantee though that we would not take it out of any FF, you know, make a shortage in anything to do with, um, FFNE.
So what's the total cost of it?
I think, I have the shortened version.
Is it all grant money?
Yes. Yes, all of it's been budgeted. Some of it's been budgeted and always been budgeted, and some of it is grant. Correct.
How much, what's the break on, you know?
I don't have the, don't have that number off the top of my head.
A breakdown?
It's, to me, to me, I know this Rogers, Rogers, it's been a tax pay as great, I'm, I'm still there.
Yeah, the total is $1,419,0430.
It's right on the screen.
Right on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, pull up. How much is that, how much is that grant? About 1,711,000 cents?
1,419,430 and 50 cents.
How much does that grant, anybody know? About 1,400,000.
While, while she's answering that, I'll also answer that we were able to-
What the allowance is for that, and how much is left?
The music, if you see the music, item number M up there on the screen, that was able, we were able to take that from a local business, women-owned business in Portsmouth. So we really tried to honor, you know, our locals. That's the music. And then down at the end, we have, uh, which is the other one that came from, oh, the library furniture ended up coming from, trying to think. It was one, so Wanger did one, and then a local, the library furniture came from the local place in Portsmouth, a woman-owned.
And the school building, I mean, the building committee has already approved this on the 6th?
Yes.
So what, what's the deadline for this?
They would like to get this in as soon as possible because to make sure all the furniture shows up in June.
They tell you what the lead time is?
It, it's an estimate, and they're just trying to get it done. You know, we haven't asked for a hard, you know, dead date, but we could if you needed this to.
Dr. Flowers?
Yeah. I mean, I haven't been in on all of this planning, but, you know, reading all your reports. What would be the alternative to not doing this, cutting the amount? I'm just asking, I'm asking Mr. Leary, anyone else. Uh, has, I'm probably answering my own question, has consideration been given in planning all of this for any of these items that are in use now? Are they still good enough to move into the new building, or would it be, I mean, especially if you have the bottoms of, the legs of furniture, it's going to do a job on the new floors. I mean, things of that sort. I'm going, talking from experience. You know, I'm sure, I, I'm going to assume that there's been some careful planning on this.
We, we went through a, an incredible, like, more than once tour of every single classroom to figure out what pieces could be salvaged. I will say the desks are not in terrible shape, um, or the chairs, but we were also, you know, once then you don't do it, and you have the money right now, then 10 years down the road, you need to do it, and you don't have the money. So, um, it's because it was a grant. And, and I will also say that we did find out, which is pretty cool, that, you know, because how do you then, you know, in June, we have a very short period, like a week, to clean out the building before the demolition starts. And we since found out that, um, we have an offer from, uh, WB Mason. They come in, and they will take all furniture that's, that has any, you know, kind of value, and they will first offer it to schools in Rhode Island, and they come in the building and take it out. And then they will offer it to, um, then they will offer it to countries outside, and they will ship it there. So those are really good options. Obviously, first of all, we have to go and make sure the city doesn't want it. Now, that's the first thing, we have to go through our policy, but we know there's going to be leftovers.
Does WB Mason, um-
They don't sell it.
They don't sell it. So we're just giving it. Did you look into a market to sell it? Mr. Young, Director Young always does that. He always looks to see if he can sell it on eBay or do something before. If the city doesn't want it, that's usually our next step. I know he's not here, but he always does that. He's very good about that.
Does, does RIDE help you with that for statewide, if, if another school, no, that's too bad?
Um, the budget, the budget for FFNE was 1.510. Um, and that was the MOA that's with RIDE. I'm still trying to find, um, the delta that Mr. Leary wanted to know about grant funding.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any, uh, you don't know, you can ask her.
What's the, what's, what's the amount?
1,419.
So, can you go back to that other slide you had with the totals up to that? So what, what, on C, what are, what are the chairs, chairs? Not the classroom chairs, not the classroom, but the one above. What is, what is-
One above.
What does that constitute?
Which one, number?
Amen furniture?
No, chairs.
Two chairs.
It says chairs. A, B, C, it says chairs. What is that? What chairs are those?
Teachers' chairs?
We also have teacher chair. We have, um, one of them may be the teachers' chairs and all the adult chairs that go around the building, which are a lot more expensive than the student chairs. I believe that's what it is.
What, what's storage?
Closets?
What, what number, give your-
S.
S.
It must be like a wardrobe or something.
Yeah, classroom closets.
It's not, it's not the, um, wood structure with the, to put the clothes in. It, I think utility storage is going to be what goes in those, um, all the, uh, custodial spaces.
No, it's like, one above it, storage, $149,000.
We would have to give the detailed list. We have one that was presented to the SBC. It's not in front of you right now.
Right.
So, let me ask this a bit. Did, did this list make sense to you?
Yes.
All right.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Nay. Next up, 5.4. Mrs. Bowlin?
I actually would like to make a motion to continue this item to a future meeting date while we wait for guidance from RIDE.
Second.
You want to read the motion first?
This one, we're-
Right.
Okay, I'll read it. Request for approval of policy 4450, Human Resources, Title IX, Harassment and Retaliation. I'm just reading, and then-
Okay. Um, sure, I'd like to, I will make a motion that we continue the, uh, request for approval of policy 4450, Human Resources, Title IX, Harassment and Retaliation, to a future meeting date while we await guidance from RIDE.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Becky.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ice out. Next is 5.5. Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes, um, this is a request for approval of a communication of the Newport School Committee to the Newport City Council regarding, uh, request to retain Newport Area Career and Technical Center, which is known as the NACTEC building.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I, I can explain it first. So, uh, this letter, after, you know, if you've read it, it's basically so that it goes, we may be talking to city council people, but you have to present it formally. And this is presenting it to them that we are looking for their support. It might be just support, it might be fine, you know, financial. We're going to, you know, the letter, the letter points out that we're going to look at what we have left, you know, in the, in the budget. We, we do not have, we do not know exactly what it's going to cost at this point. We know that, um, that, the 14th, which is, uh, today, they're going to, tomorrow, they're going to have some ideas of what it will look like. They're not going to have the money numbers. On the next week, we're going to go over with them, um, on the 22nd, Wednesday, the 22nd, we'll go over with them. And at that point, it'll be turned over to Gil Bain to get the actual estimates. So we're trying to, we actually back map, back map this whole process over, trying to get every single date in so that it fits, it's very complicated to fit the school committee and the city council without, without missing it, because we still are held to that March 1st date for a commitment.
Any discussion?
Aye. Go ahead.
Mrs. Bowlin?
We still have the money that was set aside to demolish the NACTEC building that we'll add into that. Is that, I, I don't have the attachment of your letter, so I don't, it may be in there, I don't know.
It's like 300,000, I think, I might be wrong.
It's about, it's approximately that, yeah, 200,000.
260.
Yeah. So is that in your letter to the council, Mrs. Bowlin?
It alludes to that, that after going over, but it doesn't come right out and say that. And also, I just want to point out that not really thinking through this yet all the way, that's an SBC kind of thing that we have to work with them. Um, it's part of, you know, the MOU and all, everything there, but it makes sense to you that we would be able to use that money. So I'm not saying that it's not going to happen. I'm just saying, we got to coordinate that with, with the school building committee.
How do we do that so that it happens?
That's where I'm kind of at, I think, as the middleman between these-
Yeah.
All three groups, and we'll be on our-
You alluded to it in the letter?
We alluded that we would look at all available funds that we left.
I really think that that money is something that we should tell the city council that we have to put towards it.
Individually, but-
Because we can't go with our tin can again and start begging. This is a joint effort that I think they, they want to know.
But we can promise it at this time.
No, I know, I know, but a mention of it would be great.
Okay, I can do that when we, so we have to get this-
Well, we, we budgeted an amount to take that building down. If that building's not coming down, then that money should be available in the process of retaining that building.
And it would be good to let them know that.
A beginning for us. And then, you know, it's been really clear to me, I've said this the last time, I'm going to say it again, that people in Newport don't want that building to come down. I've had, I can't tell you how many people have come up to me and said, thank you for doing that. And I say, don't thank me, because first of all, the only thing we've done is the school committee said we don't want to take the building down. But we still have a bunch of hurdles to go through. And what I don't want to have happen is we miss one day or we're two days off, or somebody throws a monkey wrench in the middle of this and screws it up, and we could have saved that building. And, and I, and I have a feeling that there's other forces at work somewhere in, in the universe that may be working a little bit against this process, and I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure that we're real clear about what we're doing, and that if there's anything out there, if there's any pothole out there that I could, don't have to drive through, I'd like to know what it is now. I'm asking people, tell me what it is, so we can smooth it out. Whatever we have to do, that's all I'm saying.
And I'm just going to say, because I kind of felt that was directed at me.
No, it's not. Believe me. I'm not, I'm putting that out to the world. I'm saying that to whoever wants to hear it, that, that we're clear about what we're doing, and if there are things out there that people know about, that they, and I don't want to hear if you'd asked me, I could have told you that's a problem. I'd like to know what the problem is, and we can, and so we can solve that problem. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I didn't run for school committee and point fingers at anybody about anything that they did. I said nothing about that. I ran on what I ran on. And I'm speaking tonight about what I'm speaking about. So Becky, please, this has nothing to do with you.
All right.
I just, I just want to point out that as the point person here, this is exactly what I'm trying to do. This letter never would have gotten on here.
This is the process that we need to go through.
This is the process, and I'm trying to do it, and I'm getting expert help.
I didn't get the amendment. I'm at the attachment, so I had, I didn't get a chance to read it. So I'm having a hard time understanding what-
Was that in the board docs?
I'm on board docs.
Dr. Flowers, sorry.
No, just looking at this, I mean, it's, it couldn't be more detailed. Any question that anyone would have here or council or whoever, they're answered, all of your, the, the eight reasons plus everything else. Um, it's obviously well thought out. I mean, I, I think this is, it's well done.
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Flowers. It says, we hope-
There are people who, if taking down the career and tech building was like, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it says right here, we hope you receive the final numbers.
People really want to keep that building.
By the middle of February. So you're right. So, you know, we have that in here. I'm pretty comfortable with this. Any more discussion?
Yes, I have some comments. So, I wasn't expecting all that. I mean, I have not spoken to anybody about this, but I am about to be negative. Sorry, Mr. Powers. Dr. Powers. But, um, okay, the letter says we've carefully analyzed options. I think that's a stretch. I think the school committee, you know, the school building committee definitely went over this multiple times. Um, the school department looked at options for automotive and technology, automotive technology and cosmetology. The school committee, we had one vote on let's ask SLAM to redesign. So, um, I'm not super comfortable with, with that sentence, but, you know, I want to reiterate that I have reservations about keeping this building. Um, there are definitely some perceived wins, they are listed out, but everyone knows there's always consequences to every decision. All right? And I see this as an equity issue for the students. We wanted an integrated career tech high school so that all of our academic programs would be seen as equal and together in the same building. It would just provide seamless learning across disciplines, having all that collaboration happen easily, because they're in proximity. And I'm afraid that we're going to make others of our automotive and our cosme- And I'm afraid that we're gonna make others of our automotive and our cosmetology students. You know, we're putting them in an old building, we have no plans to renovate it, to update it. And I will point out that cosmetology is also the only program we have that is primarily female students. So, I place a lot of the blame for where we are today, actually, on Rhode Island Department of Education. They've flip flopped a lot on this topic, do we keep these programs? You know, they cut them, and when we were trying to design, we weren't able to get support to build the space. And so, now they're back, because by popular demand, every community wants to keep these things. And we've been left on our own. So, we're in this really tough situation, and I feel like it's a very, it's far from an ideal solution. I really want to still challenge the school department and the city to make sure that the new Rogers High School is going to meet the academic needs and desires for programming for all of our students, because that was the mission of this whole school building project when we started in 2018. And, and I want us to see that through, thank you.
Mr. Jim.
Mrs. Cullen.
There would be no cosmetology program if the building comes down. There would be no automotive program if the building comes down. And to say that it's a female-focused course and not that women can't do any of the options at NAC Tech is really sort of, hmm, I'm surprised that you would say that.
That's not what I...
But anyway, it's a sewer line issue. And to me, I, the more I hear about it, the more I shake my head that we would give up two programs, two popular programs. We would give up where to put the administration, which is still nowhere until we figure it out. We would give up the option for storage, which Rob Young has said is really important. There's so many positives to this, and as far as having others, there would be no other if they didn't have the building to go to for those programs. I can't believe assigning that sort of, it's ridiculous. But I really think we all need to work together to make sure this happens, and I sure hope there aren't any undercurrents to stop it, thank you.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Ayes, ayes. Next up on our discussion is 6.1, absentee and tardiness.
The reports are there. Tard, absenteeism unfortunately is, is improving from a year ago, but it's not where we'd like to see it. So, we have an event this Thursday, starting here at Pell, RE Newport, and our community partners, along with teachers that are helping us in the after-school program. We're starting there to emphasize with parents, to get parents more involved, to make sure they understand the importance of attendance, and of course, literacy. So, that program will be going on this Thursday. Candice Andrade, Director Andrade, has reached out to Central Falls, and we've talked to Pawtucket, and we've talked to them on some of the initiatives that they're doing and some of the policies that they have in place. She will have her full report for you. But just to, for instance, unexcused and excused absences, they're treated the same. Does, it's great when parents call in, make us aware. But Pawtucket in particular, I believe it was, so, I'm sorry, Central Falls, saw that when they said that you had to have a doctor's note for any absences, and they put in a clinic at the school. They found that more students were attending at school, and that helped with their attendance. So, she does have some bullet points, she's still following up on that, and we're looking at their policies as well, so that we can change some of our policies and practices here in Newport. The report you'll continue to get every week, as you do right now, and of course, at your committee meetings. That's it.
As far as tardiness goes, I think you mentioned last meeting that, that there's, there is, there's no discipline for kids that are late.
Correct, there's nothing such as, for instance, back in the dinosaur days, a detention. I would get a detention or something like that when I was in school. What they do have though is they have social restrictions. So, for tardies and, and absences, attendance, and it has worked with some groups of children, young people, they're prohibited from social events, from going to sporting events, going to dances, going to any of those social things. Those have had an impact, and tardies are included in that.
What's the threshold for that? Because my kids, I mean, I'll be honest, I have two daughters at Rogers, it's a challenge. And they tell me that they're late because it doesn't matter, and nothing happens. I mean, on Monday, I found out that my kids, and I know, I'm outing my children, but they were at Dunkin' Donuts at 25 minutes to 8, standing in line. And so, of course, I confronted them on it, and, and they said to me, "But Dad, there was, Mr. Such-and-Such was in line with us, an administrator. So, Dad, if he doesn't have to go to school on time, why do I?" That's a true story, so...
You can let me know who Mr. Such-and-Such is when we're off the air.
Yes, I'm not gonna mention the name, yeah, it was...
Yeah, but the other thing is about that, is that, does anything happen at home?
Yeah, it's a constant challenge for me, yes.
Yes, okay. So, I'll get the exact numbers, I'll ask them for the framework that they use, but they do have social penalties for it. And they have to earn their way back to be able to attend things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
I have some questions, uh, Mr. James. I'm looking at the tardies now. How come on 12/20, there's only eight kids tardy at Rogers? And you look at all the other days of '60, '70, 102, 99, 94?
They had special events that morning. It was right before the holiday break, it's the Friday before holiday break.
So, they didn't take attendance?
No, they took attendance, but I can look specifically at what they were doing that day, that morning.
Look at that day and day before, it's 8:20, but every other one's in the 90s, hundreds. There's a lot of kids, a lot of kids absent, tardy, sure, that's too... That's at Rogers, I think, at Thompson.
Yep.
It's a mess. I know it's...
It's a mess everywhere, Mr. Larry, and we've been talking to other school districts. I, I hear you.
If you look at the state roster, it comes out every day.
The leaderboard.
The leaderboard, thank you. We're always at the bottom 10. So, there are schools that are succeeding. It's not, we cannot continue to say it's everywhere, it's everybody's problem. No, it's our problem, it's our problem. We are down at the very bottom most days. Top Rogers, you know, always like, I can't quote it, but like 250th or something out of 275. I'm just using rough numbers. But, and I've been tracking it for years, so it's not a new phenomenon. So, yeah, there are things that we have to do differently, and it's not just because everybody else has the same problem.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments on absenteeism or tardiness? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to 6.2, which is subcommittee reports.
Do we have to vote on it, Mrs.?
No, there's...
Okay.
Just discussion items.
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports, and I don't think we have any, because, is anybody...
We haven't met.
You haven't met yet, right. Anybody want, well, we'll talk about it coming meetings. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to another discussion item. It's 6.3, the school building committee update. And I think I updated you a lot on that already, but, but I will have, I do have a comment on the next one. So, anybody else for 6.3? Okay, 6.4, this NAC Tech, this is on the NAC Tech redesign. I don't remember what I was gonna say now, in my head. No, it's not, it's not coming to me, so, should've done it when there was the time. Okay, and, so anyway, we're doing, you know, we're working hard. Just so you know, we meet every Wednesday, at a very minimum, Wednesday, 7:30 a.m., and then we meet again in person at 12. We try to take care of all, you know, upcoming, you know, issues, challenges. We try to challenge the people that, you know, work for us, and, you know, it's, and, and just so you know, Mr. Power, we are 100% on board with getting this done and trying to meet all the dates, all right?
Ms. Bowlin, you may be wanting to share that tomorrow, we're gonna see the tentative drawings. Yes.
We are gonna see the tentative drawings tomorrow at 12 noon, so, if you're interested. We are, we can't have four, but we could, we could have three people come to see that in, in your office, right?
Right, with pop, right, yes.
You're just the first two that tell me, we're glad to share with you. Okay, next.
Just make sure you value engineer those drawings.
I know, I agree.
Yeah, next is the update on the cell tower, Mr. Larry.
Well, I think there's some good news, if anybody wants to bring it up. On the bids, you had a bid already out, you want, this man, you wanna come up and go through it?
No.
I thought we had a very good bid, it was very low.
We have one that is. It has not been awarded, correct?
Correct, correct.
Correct, we have numbers in, and then we have to award. So, it's much, the cost is much less than we thought it was, to your point. And we're hoping to have that wrapped up in the next, I think, 30 days. Yep.
Yeah, because we're about to do something soon with this, and it's, the price, the quote is, if it's fine, it's very minimal. They're gonna scrap the steel, obviously, and make money by doing that, you know?
Correct.
But, you, that, at least it's locked up now.
It is.
But the barbed wire along, there's part of the fence, I took pictures again today, part of the fence is broken down, and you can walk right into it, on the left-hand side going up. There's also only barbed wire on a little bit of it.
Okay.
So, I think once Interlocal Trust finds out we got a 75-foot tower, and there's no barbed wire along the top of it even, so, I think as soon as we get them saying we got a bid, and it's good, you know, we can decide on the date later on, but I think it needs to get done sooner, better than later.
Correct.
Mrs. Bowlin.
Okay, so this, I'm gonna relate it to this, because as I said, I just forgot what I really wanted to say. But getting, getting it out of the way before we work on the, on parking lots is very important. And just so you know, that Dave, Mr. Hawall is working incredibly hard to figure out what we can do to improve the cosmetology before school starts next year.
Yes.
He's, he's got a full plan, he goes in, I've been in there three times now when he's in there. And he's just, you know, I think it's gonna be exciting, he's got a real vision.
The instructor said it was in good shape, she wasn't too concerned about it when she spoke to us at the last meeting, so, great.
Any more discussion? Okay. Next up is our consent agenda. Uh, Mrs. Bowlin, you wanna make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Yes, can I, we have a motion to accept the entire consent agenda.
Second? Any discussion?
This is, I, I just have one thing.
Oh, we have a second, yeah, yeah.
Just one thing, and it's really picky. In the, in the minutes, 5.7, second paragraph, it's just an unfinished sentence. It might just be a typo. Under Jill Greenman Reynolds, and then it says, "The program changed her life and does not want students to..." It just stops at two, 5.7.
Is that something you guys can fix easily?
It's just, it's very rare, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Oh, you have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes, ayes. Next up, correspondence.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen, finding that.
Do we have any correspondence?
No.
I did not think so. Okay. Next up is our reports from the superintendent and staff. First is our expenditure and revenue report. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, school committee members. As I've shared in my memo regarding updates to our budget planning, we have met as admin team throughout the month of December. We have a draft that will be ready for discussion at full school committee meeting in February. And it appears our new sub-finance committee will have some guidance to further develop or evolve our budget gap of between $3 and $4.5 million. That's forecasted as of January. With that said, that $3 to $4.5 million gap includes about a half million dollars of additional state aid next year. It includes a 4% increase in local appropriation, and it includes using our fund balance.
In addition to that, there's three more million that you need?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe those, excuse me, Mr. Manager, Chairman.
Yep.
I, I don't, I, I think that it was, those $3.5 million is way too high. Because I think that it's, it should, it's, it's gonna be more like $2 million, $2.5 million. But with that being said, I'd like to make the, if the meeting is set for Tuesday, whenever you get a hold of them, that you look at a 5% cut from each school, and same with the administration. Everybody give a 5% cut, and then, and that doesn't work, we do another meeting, do a 10% cut. You know, we gotta, we gotta stop putting cuts in there now, to get this straight now. You know, and 5%, you sit here and say, oh, 5%, well, 5% like at, I don't know, I just got, maybe four or five teachers, that's all. You know, so it's not drastic if you think it is. And, and there's a lot, like I mentioned about Thompson earlier, if you look at the schedule, I mean, it's easy to cut 10% from Thompson, they don't have full loads on the teachers, you know? So, I just want to make it clear that we have that there to get a look at this. And I think we need to look at this with $3.5 million, $4.5 million. And I also want to make a look at keeping that reserve of $900,000, $975,000. Just keep that reserve for things that we may need that come up besides staff, because you're gonna be faced with worse things next year if you do this now. You gotta, you gotta get on this right off the bat, and you gotta make cuts right off the bat. I know, nobody wants to talk about that except for me, but we, we are overstaffed, if you look at it. I mean, I had Colleen send me some numbers, and I just, if you look at, let me ask some people in the committee if they haven't seen it, if anybody's seen it. Do you know how many par educators we have now? Anybody know?
Par educators are required by law, but for an IED, IED...
I just say the number, I just say we're required, I just asked for the number. You know, anybody have a number?
Approximately 130.
Yeah, 130. Three years ago, we had 75.
How many?
So, we have 75.
About five years, there would have been...
Oh, it was 2019, right?
Yeah.
It would have been... I'm gonna phone it, because you got... Approximately 75. I, I think some of that was a little bit skewed, and perhaps they were federally funded in prior years. And with the S or dollars being eliminated, the positions were transitioned into our general fund, based on need.
Yeah, I don't want to go down that road again, I've said it too many times, you don't hire with one-time funds, and we did. You know, so we need to take a serious look at making cuts here. I know what your people are ready for, but you gotta get ready for it, you know?
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yeah, so, assuming, I'm gonna just say, your worst case scenario was $4, $4.5. And then you take, if we didn't get anything from the city, and we don't use the reserve, and that $500,000 you're hoping for doesn't come through, we're at $6.9 million shortage.
That's a, that's a very good estimate.
And how did, I guess, so, our first meeting, that'll be my first question, is how, just because this year we added 1.9, and we were able to get, you know, and the city helped us out 3 point something. So, I just will, I'm gonna, but you don't do it tonight.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I can speak to it, because I've been working so closely with it for the last two months. We, we don't really have anything in there extra. This is all based on contracts we have currently in place that would roll forward in the increases. And, you know, I still don't have hard numbers for anticipated health insurance costs, I use 5%. I always use 5%. But that number could come in at 10, it may also come in at only 2. But, you know, play safe, you know, that's one, I don't, um... Yeah, it's, it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of additional work, working together with the district and understanding the full impact of any proposals that we work forward, you know, as a Plan B option, or, excuse me, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, and really walk, walk that through to, so that we don't fall short in anywhere with regard to general law and education requirements.
I think those numbers are way too high.
Mrs. Cullen?
Off the top of your head, could you give me the percentage of our budget that is spent on administration, total?
Admin only, I, we're probably at $2 million, $2 million.
Percentage of the budget?
3%.
3% or 5%?
5, approximately 5.
Has that been reviewed for... Has that been reviewed for cuts?
Everything is on the table and being reviewed, everything.
I keep hearing names of people mentioned in various communications, and I'm like, oh, who's that? Who's that? It just seems to be a lot of adults for dwindling amount of children. So I'm just wondering how, how we can work that. Thank you.
I know we talked about this before the meeting briefly, but can you give us sort of a timeframe, a timeline, and when these numbers are going to get more realistic, and you feel more comfortable with them?
April.
So just as a reminder, it was, I believe, June 27th of 2024 when we finalized our 25 budget. That's when the state aid allocation numbers were finalized and posted on June 17th of 2024 for the school year to begin 7-1. We will get ballpark governor estimates. I thought they would be posted today, but maybe tomorrow. But those numbers will swing and they sway. They are never constant five months from now. So there, there will be some material changes to that. The governor's estimate comes out in January. We will get firm, firmer numbers for our health insurance end of March, early April, and that's just, you know, how the, how that process works. So it, it finalizes itself. I don't believe the city will ultimately make a decision until April on what our allocation will be, but we'll use, May, excuse me, some, May. We'll use kind of what we think, what we feel comfortable with, what we've been kind of guided towards for our budget. Everything is still really fluid in our budget.
So, so this merry-go-round roller coaster has, is never being resolved. Most of you that sit on this committee and have for years, and as someone that's been involved with schools for many years, the way we fund public education is, is broken. It's not, it's not set up to be successful. It automatically, in the state of Rhode Island, pits city councils or town councils against school committees. It becomes an us and them. The city has to fund their police, fire, everyone else, and the schools have to fund teachers and students and support families and a lot of social services. Cities and towns cannot afford the way it's set up now. It's, you know, for those that were at the meeting the other day, and Councilor Camps of Aravon sigh said it. The system's broken. And as school committee members and leaders, I think the conversations at your level more and more need to be heard by legislators. We say it at the superintendent's level. The ledge committee met today. We had some discussions on this. I'm on the ledge committee. We met with the House Speaker. We met with the Senate President last year. But what other business finds out a week before its operating year what its finals numbers, that a $50 to $100 million industry finds out what they're going to be allocated two weeks before their new fiscal year starts? And they can't even determine their staffing, to some of the discussions. Tonight, Ms. Turner had great ideas, things she wants to see that impact staffing. You offer more courses, you offer more electives. That impacts staffing, people. So there's a, there's a lot to be said, but we will go through the routine and the dance as we do every year. We will look at the numbers. We will do the layoffs, but, and we will get there. Because to, at today's meeting, every other person with me, every other superintendent, 3.8 million, 4 million, 2 point something million, all have gaps.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Cullen?
At your legislative, Dr. Jermaine, at your meeting today, was there conversation about the funding formula and how it's being, is, did you, did the, we said the superintendent's association?
Yes, it's RISA.
Subcommittee?
Yes.
Is your subcommittee requesting a bill go in this session regarding the funding formula? I've had conversations with Senator De Palma, and it's kind of dead in the water. So I would imagine that your legislative subcommittee would make that a priority to discuss. And, Mr. Chair, we are looking to arrange for a workshop, a school committee workshop with our general assembly representatives and senators in the next month. So I think we all should start talking about what we want them to do for us. But the funding formula, I think, unless we make it an issue, it will just continue to be held for further study. So I'd love it if your subcommittee could, could make that a priority. Because Senator De Palma said it's, you know, he didn't have anything to tell me new about it, and, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that, and I think some of it has to do with the changes, Mrs. Cullen, that they did last year, where the multi-language learners and the funding of multi-language learners was put into the state aid instead of being a categorical. So now, with that switch by, promoted by Senator Pearson, and Director Gonsovs can speak to it more, it's great that Newport received more funding in that area, but at the same time, it's also part of our state aid package, and that impacts the total we receive.
I think the funding form, from my, from the little I understand of it, and I know it's a very complicated issue, it needs to be completely revamped, because it cannot, we've been piecemealing it, and as you say, taking from Peter to pay Paul.
Yep.
It has to be completely revamped. So I would, I would hope that that energy would be coming from your subcommittee.
Yeah, and Dr. Wong from Brown has had comments on it, because transportation is one of the big drivers in other communities. And we are involved in a transportation discussion now. Mario Corano heads that subcommittee up at Ride. We'll continue talking.
Any more discussion for, uh, Mr. Gonsovs?
Just a quick, just a comment, just an aside. I think it was a year ago at the School Committee 101, they call it, Rhode Island Association of School Committees. And Lou De Palma did speak, you know, about the years-long effort to revamp the funding formula. Senator Pearson was a big part of that. And, and I came away with the sense that the state legislators are very aware that the funding formula, they backed into a number. They said, this is what we have for education, just like, you know, we've always, the superintendents have always been under that same stresser, where you're given a budget and then you have to figure it out. So the state, instead of saying what we want to commit, you know, to, instead of saying, well, we have all these issues, and we're going to find out what it's going to take to fix them, and that's going to be our budget. They said, this is our budget. Well, how can we divvy that up? And so it's backwards. It's very backwards. But, I mean, I came away with the sense that, again, that they are quite aware. Whether or not we have the money to actually do that, it's another story.
They're definitely aware, but there is no legislation yet, and it needs to go in this session that speaks to a revamping of how the funding formula calculus is done.
I agree.
All right, before we move on to 9.2, I, I realize that I neglected to ask for a motion to accept the reports from superintendent and staff, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Bowlen to make that motion.
I'm making a motion to accept the reports from the superintendent and staff.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Winslow. 9.2 Newport Public Restrictive Grants Report from Director Gonsovs.
Chairman, I just want to go back to that expenditure revenue report, if I could. Mr. Maine, and I could, could, could put out tomorrow, whatever, as soon as possible, what if each school would have a 5% cut and then a 10% cut in their budget? What it would look like. So when we meet on Tuesday, if that's still the date, we have a look at some of the stuff. So each school would do a 5% cut, and then the category would have a 10% cut, and as well as administration.
Right, so I believe, Mr. Larry, I just want to make sure I'm following your request. So you'd like to see what each cost center, if you reduce it by 5% or 10%, what that dollar amount is.
Yeah, I want to see what it is too.
Well, I think we need to see what the dollar amount is, and then you know what you need to do, correct?
And you wanted it by when?
Well, we're going to have a meeting possibly Tuesday, finance committee, and they said February to come back with the budget to us.
I, I thought you said tomorrow.
Oh, no, 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 she said send it out. No, no, send it out tomorrow to the principals and the schools.
Oh, I see, okay.
Right there. Doctor, Director Gonsovs has to give us the dollar amount.
I have to work that out with, I, I have to work it out exactly what you're looking for. And I don't want you to think it's not a priority, but it's really important that I get Impact Aid reporting done in the next, by the end of the week. It's, it's got a due date next week, and I have, I will do my best. That's a priority number two. I will try and have at least the template ready with a column that can flatline what a 5% number is for applicable salary and fringe benefit costs in those two categories, 51 and 52. And then I can do the same calculation for a 10%. It's just getting the backup to those, to that, that's going to take a little bit of time. It will, I, I won't be able to do that fully by, by Tuesday.
Right, and the Impact Aid is, impacts our revenues, so we need, we want to do that.
Well, it's, it's not that they can't, but typically, we work together on that.
And I think you want hard numbers. You don't want wild guesses.
This $3.5 million, $4.5 million to me is overinflated, you know, but we just, we just got to get something going here.
Okay, all right, suggestion. If we start with why we're at, where we're at, so that you can at least hear from Director Gonsovs, the rationale and thinking behind it, as Ms. Bowlen said, that's going to be one of her first questions, all right? Where are we? How did we get here? Then the second part is, and I hear you clearly, now, if we, if you look at each of those cost centers, including administration, and you take a 5% reduction, and then you take a 10% reduction, I'm imagining you're going to want to know the dollars. So that means that'll be X amount from this place, this place, and this place, and administration, correct?
Yeah, I would also like to know what positions they would recommend cutting.
I don't know if we're going to have all that. We can have the dollar amount. I think then we have to look at what we must have in the district, must have, to fulfill graduation requirements, for instance, at a high school. You have to have these teachers, these instructors, those kind of things. But we, I believe we both hear you, understand you, and know you want this, and we will be meeting with you on Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Larry, I think the, the issue for them is that, you know, to apply a percentage across a salary amount, like if you have X amount of salaries at Thompson, you can put a percentage on that. If you start to delve into individual people, now you've got benefits, you've got step, scale, all that stuff. That would get very complicated very quickly. It would take a lot longer to do that. So you can't say, oh, these are the positions, because each one of those positions would have a different impact financially. You can get a, an overall 10%, 5% based on the amount of salaries that are at Thompson, that they're at Pell, that are in these different categories. You can do that. But when you start picking individuals or start picking positions, then you've got very specific things of longevity, what step they're on, all the other stuff. They have a family plan, they have a single plan. That would get really complicated. That would take a long time.
And I hear that, but I just want to get straight for the committee for February, that we were acknowledging what we got here. I mean, I, I think this number, I would say, over and over, it's inflated. It's not $3.5 million, $4.5 million, no.
All right, Dr. Flowers has been waiting a while. I apologize.
Well, I think Dr. Power was kind of touching on what I was going to say, that you look at your cost drivers, and it's not some of the little things that, even repairs, or maybe that's another thing. Do we want to go back to 50 years ago, dare I say, when that's how the budgets were sort of kept in line? Just don't bother fix anything. So that could be one thing. But if you're going to, say, take 5% cuts, and you're looking at one of your cost drivers, and it's the contractual promises, Council 94, 10, everyone else, that would be a good dream. The transportation, those are contracts. Can't, and you can't say, well, we're not going to bus kids because you have things like state laws. I know what your point is. We have to do something, granted. But when you look at, at a specific amount of programs, here we, we spent much of the past couple of hours talking about getting these kids invest, that want to invest them their energy into being productive citizens. And then we're going to cut some of these? Do they expect people to do these things for nothing? I mean, th, these are points to really keep in mind. Who do you, and who do you get rid of? I mean, these are questions. It sounds nice when we want, if, if we want to let the public know that we're, we're fiscally responsible. We're not stupid either. So, you know, it's a, it's, it's, it's a tough situation. And if we're going to do, then everyone in the city has to do that too.
All right, I think we need to move on. I mean, the, the, the numbers we have now are speculative at this point.
They absolutely are.
They're going to be much clearer next month. We have a more in-depth discussion.
I can speculate some more. A 5% cut across the board, salary and fringe benefits would net approximately $2 million. A 10% would net approximately $4. However, the point that Dr. Flowers and, and Dr. Power shared, that's stage one. Once we start drilling down to making it happen, unfortunately, it, it will boil down to a lower number, because that's, that's just how it shakes out when we change positions, remove them.
We have to.
All right.
That's all, I just wanted to share that. Two and four. Thank you.
All right, 9.2 Newport Public School Restrictive Grants Report. Turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Are there any questions about our grants and the grant pay? Yes, please.
Well, I'm going to ask Impact Aid. I hear you're sending the final report, right, on Impact Aid this week?
Drafting. I hope to have it submitted.
How did we do for collecting? We haven't met in a few weeks. Did we do pretty well collecting them?
I, I think I touched 1,500 files today, but I don't have that number. I'm sorry.
Okay, so just because we got a lot of money last year, extra money from Impact Aid, and we need to keep on top of it.
We are on target to do very similar, very, very, very similar reporting.
I just have.
Yes.
We're trying to save on heat, because you know what will happen? We'll be calling in the plumbers and the repair people.
Mrs. Cullen?
Just a quick question.
Things, if you're spending it on our attorney, trying to get us out of trouble.
Mrs. Cullen?
Quick question about Title I funding. I know that it's geared to our elementary school. Does that include the 5th grade at Thompson?
Yes.
So Thompson does get money from the Title I check, grant, whatever, for their 5th grade. Do they know that?
Because they, yeah, I, I don't know if they know that. They asked me to look into it. That's why I'm asking.
I, if I had that question before the meeting, I would have a better answer. I'm sorry, I don't have.
Well, if you could let me know.
Yeah, I mean, just in general, the breakout by category on how we're spending Title I monies are here, but our application for the CRP is a public document. I'd be happy to discuss.
I'm just curious, because 5th grade is an elementary grade, and I just want to make sure they get their cut.
Any other questions on 6.2? Then move on to 6.3 Enrollment Demographics and Homeless Report. Dr. Jermaine?
Are there any questions?
Well, I did notice, and someone had mentioned it, about the 8th grade. The 8th grade only has 115 kids. So the graduating class at Rogers is, has 161 kids, so we're going to be down like 46 kids at Rogers next year. Am I wrong?
Most likely we will, yes.
And then, and, and the classes behind that, 7th grade, 128, 6th grade, 109. So the next few years, I mean, we are going to be down quite a few kids.
I will, by the end of this week, I'll be able to forward you the NESTEC enrollment reports. They're coming in this week. We ask, each year, we have a enrollment. We ask each year, we have enrollment, enrollment projections, forecasts, and they are down.
So, Dr. Jermaine, I was looking at Exeter West Greenwich. I think they have less kids than we do.
Yes, they do.
Not by a lot, but they got, and Narragansett, clearly less.
And they're declining too, yes.
Yeah, all right, running their own school systems. Do you have a sense of how they're staffed and what their per pupil is? I mean, I know we have a different population, but, you know, they're both, they're not in a region at this point.
Correct.
And they're running their own show. And I'm just kind of curious as to what, how they, how they staff.
I don't know their programming at Narragansett High, so I'd have to look at it.
I think we should, I know we're not the same, but it'd be interesting to know because they're, they're there. I mean, they got less numbers. We, how do we look? And maybe it's because we have a different population and we've got to do stuff that they don't have to do. I don't know.
We do have a very different population than Narragansett, but I will look at it. I do know they're offering a CTE program on, I think it's agriculture, which is a great one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is something that I've noticed since I've been receiving these reports in the last, what, how long have we been doing this? Six weeks? And I don't know if you've noticed this, Dr. Jermaine, but our female male ratio really starts to skew after Pell. And at Pell, they stay pretty even, boys and girls, pretty even numbers, 69, 67, 68, 67. But as soon as they enter Thompson, the numbers completely flip. Currently, there are 60 female girls in the 5th grade and 81 boys. And that is consistent all the way through to high school. Have you ever looked into that? What, what that is or why that is? I did find out today that at All Saints, it's, it's the reverse. At the Met School, it's the reverse. So they have more girls than boys. So we're losing our girls to All Saints and to the Met School and other places. Do you know why that is?
I don't know if we are because they may have a population.
The data shows that, that across the state, I did, I did a little digging in and other schools are on, are at par. They don't drop significantly like we do in the middle school and the high school. Just, just look across the numbers and you'll see.
I see them right there. And I'm, I, I just, my comment on that was I didn't know they were Newport students that were attending those schools because other students from other districts.
There are, there are more, there, both the two I referenced, and I'm not, I'm just using those because I've spoken to principals at both All Saints and at the Met School. They have far more girls than they do boys. So I'm just wondering why we're losing, I mean, look at the numbers. There are pretty significant number drops from the elementary school numbers that are in, in sync, 50, 50.
I see that in front of me. I would have to go back and look at the cohorts.
It's something we just need to figure, to, to, to pay attention to because, I mean, there are many, many theories, but I think that females are saying, I want to, I want to go to a school where I feel that I'm getting the ability to academically, socially, safety. I, I think these are things we have to think about because that's a pretty dramatic number differential.
I agree with you that we should always keep that at the forefront of our thinking. What I'm trying to share is that I would go back and I'm going to look at the cohorts to see if that population shift, to your point, is happening so dramatically.
Well, the numbers show us right there. 97 boys in the 12th grade, 64 girls.
Correct.
That's a lot. That's a big difference.
Correct, I'm sorry. I don't think I'm communicating my point. I'm trying to say I see the numbers are large and different. What I'm saying is, last year, I wonder how many girls were in the 11th grade at Rogers? How many girls two years ago were in at Rogers? That's what I'm trying to say. And to your point, is it happening when they go from 8th to 9th grade? That's a very good thing to look into and see if that is what's happening.
It's happening between 4th and 5th grade.
4th and 5th grade, when they go to middle school?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Dramatic, look at there, 81 and 60 in the 5th grade, right? Am I looking, yeah, 60 girls, 81 boys. That's a big differential for.
Right, I'm just very quickly while we're talking.
Whereas when you look at the 4th grade, there were 64 girls and 60 boys. It just seems very stark. But there's such a difference here at this time, the previous year. And it's consistent across all the grades. I've been looking at the numbers because it, I was like, how can this be? So, yeah, it's something for us to think about.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we used to do Title I, just goes back a long time. We knew kids who were, who left Newport, they're out of district at other schools. Do we still know that? Do we still know how many?
Yes, we have the list, yes.
Of how many kids they're at?
Yes, I don't have it in front of me, but yes, we get that every year. That's how we determine how much funding our partner schools get out of the Title I budget.
I just, just curious as to maybe, do we see that we've got a larger group of girls that are enrolled in outer district than boys? I mean, I, if we still keep those numbers, and it sounds like we do.
Yeah, we have those.
Anyone else?
Just a comment that when you have small numbers, even a small number can look like a very big change. So just remember the context that we're looking at. If we can dig down and find all the reasons, it would be interesting to look at. But just because you see, you know, 10 different, and so it looks, it's a huge percentage of that denominator.
It's more like, it's more like 15% per grade.
We can't, we can't glaze over it. It really is an issue. I apologize.
All right, anyone else? All right, let's move on then. 10 dot, 10 dash 1 is our meeting dates and agenda items. The only thing I see here that is a change is the Policy Subcommittee meeting, which was Wednesday, January 15. Then we just did that.
No, that will be, we meet this. Yeah, we meet the third Wednesday of the month. So we will be meeting on February 19.
So that's February 19.
Yes, suggested meeting dates.
Yes, Mrs. Boland.
I'd like to add to next month's agenda, an item to approve cell phone, to approve the banning of cell phones in the classroom. I know we have a little bit of work to do before we do it, but we just keep putting it off month after month.
And that's for the February 11th meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I do want to say this on that topic, that if I don't have a presentation from the administration with a plan and that they've gone out and looked at places where it's successful, I'm not going to be in favor of that. I'm not against it, but I'm just saying.
We'll have an opportunity to discuss that.
I'll have a month.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Two, two, two meetings that I'd like to discuss. The first one I mentioned previously, which is a date for a workshop with the General Assembly delegation. They've asked us to pick a couple of dates, which I will do. It'll be on a Saturday morning, I think. So just to let everybody know, that's in, in the works and we'll, we'll get that information out as soon as we have it. Also, I'd like to organize a special meeting workshop, call it what you'd like, with the school committee and the administration to discuss our RICAS scores. And not just to have a presentation that shows us what's already available publicly on the report card, but actually a discussion about the why and the how we're going to change it.
Yeah, you could work with Dr. Jermaine and Mrs. Nash if she's back.
Okay, just for the record, I'd like to have, have that happen in February. So I don't know how, what the process is, but.
Could you add stars to that?
Yes.
Oh, definitely. How we went from one, from two stars to one star at our elementary school.
Put your name in a building, you get one star.
So just, Ms. Cullen, Director All and I, we went over a report yesterday. I can probably, early next week, send you the draft. And if you want a little bit more information or in a different direction.
I'm sorry, what did you go over yesterday?
We went over the RICAS scores and we went over the STAR reports. And we were actually trying to do something so that the public and everyone could clearly understand why and the reasoning behind it. But I can send that to you.
Reasoning behind it, can you elaborate on that? Is it like we, we increased the twos, the almosts to the proficiency? I mean, I, I've been to.
This is not on our agenda. We really can't talk about it.
Okay, sorry. I started the conversation. I apologize.
So we'll, we'll schedule that.
All right, thank you.
So one request, can that be videotaped too when you do it as a workshop?
Yes, I think all of our workshops need to be videotaped, all of them, definitely, yes.
Okay. All right, next up is our executive session, which we don't have. So that will bring us to 13. Did you have something, Mrs. Boland?
No, getting ready to make the motion.
Do adjourn? You almost jumped out of your seat.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Stephanie.
Aye, Tabitha, thank you.
Last year's report.